You guys are ready.
Welcome, everybody. Sean, you're here to call the roll?
Yeah, sorry. Um, Toby. Jay. Daniel Lee.
There.
And Rieger.
Yes.
And Glender. Jim Martin. Taylor.
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Got a full house. And we have a new member. Trisha, you introduce yourself and tell folks about yourself. You're, you know, you're probably new to the township, I guess.
Yeah. It's nice to be here. I'm Trish Taylor and I moved to Germantown in 2018. My husband and I, we had, um, originally were from Tip City. And both, he works for Lebanon Corrections. And he was a corrections officer for a while and then ran the farm down there and then they closed it. And it was our treatment. So I'm a teacher at Kettering. So we moved down here to be in between both of us where we were, where we were living. So it made it a little bit easier, not such a far drive. But we lived in Franklin for a long time. And after the farm closed at Lebanon, he grieved that job and we wanted to find a farm of our own because we had a couple cows. And it took us a couple of years and we landed here out on Edie Road. So it's been delightful and we love it here. We raise beef and, you know, grow hay and have goats and a donkey and chickens and two dogs and cat. I mean turtle, all kinds of things. So it's just, we think it's a little piece of paradise out there. So we have a daughter who's 22 and a son who's going to be 12 at the end of this month. And so I wear a lot of hats, farmer, teacher, mom, wife, all kinds of things. So, but this opportunity came up because there was a, we had a case with our own property. And with that case, um, I was approached then at the end if I had ever considered, volunteering for something like this. So that's how that came about through a lot of research and talking to people and getting to know people. And if it's an opportunity to serve and I can help, then I told Kurt that I would love to do that. So that's how I landed here after writing a resume after 30 years that I had never done. So, um, and interviewing, which I haven't had to do either. So it's been a great experience. So thanks for having me and I look forward to getting to meet, to know all of you.
Welcome.
Welcome to the board.
And I, I know Mark was impressed with and as was, was it Pete Lurker that went up to that?
Pete Lurker approached me.
Yeah, he was impressed with, with your initiative that you went and I think you talked to the soil conservation.
Oh, yes.
Group and dug into what prime ag is and got some of the information behind that all on your own.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, what happened was is that the, our neighbors who are super kind, it was their parents that wanted to build a house on the property. We live on shotgun properties out there. They're about 17 to 19 acres. And they wanted to build another residence on there for his father-in-law. So he had signed and applied here to, to do that. Well, we moved out here to be in the country and to farm and to keep agriculture. We didn't want more houses being built and it to become like a plat or, and then set that precedence for more houses. And other people do the same thing with their property. So I didn't know much about it. I just had the emotion at first. And so, um, lost a lot of sleep and then started to dig in and find out if there was anything. So we did a lot of research or I did a lot of research looking at the laws and, and, and what there was out there. And we went to that first zoning meeting and I had written, you know, three pages of reasons and, had pictures and diagrams and as a teacher I had color coded and like laid it all out. So, and then.
A second grader could understand it, right?
Yeah, exactly. Like I, I wanted a flow chart. I want, I asked, I think I asked Sean if there was, if there was a, a smart board so I could do a presentation and do some slides. But, um, I, I don't know. I just, um, so up there, you know, there was every, all of it was learning. And I didn't know much coming into it. But then Joe Schuler had asked me like three questions and I felt terrible that I couldn't answer them. So I, that's when I then continued and I wanted to find the answers to those questions. And one of them was about, because I had talked about the tiles on the field and the water system and all of these different issues. And soil, we live on a bog. It's a wetland bog. And if they would, if there would be some sort of house built there, it would interrupt that, uh, natural filtering system to our pond that feeds our cows. So it was a whole chain reaction of things. So Pete Lurker liked that I was calm. I think when I presented it, he said, and I stuck to the facts. I didn't get emotional in front of everybody. So I wasn't aware that I was doing that, but that's what he was talking about. So it was nice talking to him afterwards. And then I talked to you too. You gave me the email address. So too. So, yeah, it was, it's been a great experience. Then I got to meet with you a couple times.
Yeah. We're happy that you're joining us as, as an alter because we have, Mark's, I think I mentioned this to you. Mark Cross's philosophy is that the alternates need to know what we know and follow along. Because, you know, you can be called upon at any time to sit on the board and be a voting member. And, you know, be up to speed as far as what the issues are. So, you know, you, you called on in front of a room full of people to make a decision, right?
Right. I want to be prepared and learn fast.
Yeah. It's happened. So we have a visitor, Deb Cross. Yeah. Hi.
Hi.
And you've been involved with a lot of this work on the definitions and trying to, as I call it, repair the, the resolution. So, um, well, thank you for joining us here. Hey, any questions of Tricia at all? Okay. So moving into old business, um, we've got the minutes. Uh, and I think you copied those. Okay. Yeah. Yeah, I've got the some places here. So that's the, this is the minutes from our January 3rd meeting. And, uh, you need some time to look them over. No, there's, there's a number of issues that I did not move into old business. Because the main thing we got to get done tonight is approving the definitions. For the mark and get it to the county and then get it to the trustees and get, get the resolution. I guess because right now what's on the website and available to public is not, not what we want. It's not what we approved here, you know, these are unconventional, put it that way. So, uh, so any, any points on the, uh, corrections or anything on the, that's notes?
So will we approve them either written or read or what?
As written. Here a second.
A second.
All in favor? Okay, the minutes from the January 3rd meeting are approved as written. So continuing with old business, the most important thing again is, is the, uh, looking at the definitions. And, um, I sent those out so that if you had the opportunity to look at them in advance. So, um, Deb, you did an enormous amount of work getting this converted and, uh, I guess it was, the document was salvaged out of a, damaged computer. And you, you were able to set, uh, put it into some format. And then you'd sent it to, to us and Dan, Dan Lee then spent an incredible amount of time making, so that once it loaded into Word, it looked a little different. Okay. I think you worked in Google Docs maybe? And then Dan, you had Libra or something?
Yeah, or which goes into. Stop. Excuse me, Word documents.
Yeah, so we, we were trying to get all the, the formatting and the numbering in order. Because a lot of it, uh, some of it got scrambled and had needles in a haystack going through and cleaning up some punctuation and things like that. So that's, that's.
I would change on the, you said, I would have thought an incredible amount of time knowing what you put into it. The thing that Deb did was, uh, it wasn't because she gave us a mess, which, which kind of was, but wasn't because of her. It was because there was different formatting already in there and it was, it'd been impossible to try to go in and clean up all that formatting.
I just gave you the data and you just have to make it look like somebody could read it.
So some of that time was just me trying to find a great, a right format to get it in so we could make it, I was trying to take it like it looked like our, our regular resolution. So.
I went back there and looked at it all again compared to, it to the original. What was approved, what it actually was in there. And then what you did and it looks really good. I only found a couple of things and I didn't know, um, and it was the twos. All of them were twos on four different areas at 20601. And I didn't know if that was something that wasn't intended for you to look back at later. Or maybe it's just the way that I look at it on my computer and it's not on yours.
20601? So what, what is the, uh?
Two looks different to me there than other.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
There's a town size. I mean, that's, that's one thing we were doing. We were looking for some, and some of those, some of those, um, individual one character was an italicized character.
Yeah.
So I found the number of those two. That's what we missed. So thank you.
Good catch.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's hard to do that.
It's really hard to see that and, and I'm just looking at it.
Yeah.
I both went through looking for specifically, after we've done it specifically for other italicized places, we found a couple that, hey, there's another one. So we both were looking for that, but.
I don't think I was looking at the numbers for italicized though.
Yeah, we saw, there was a couple you saw.
Yes.
Could you, could you mark that, Dan? We'll, we'll make the correction.
So that was 206.
20601 Armeland Prime. You know, that.
Yes, she, she did. I, I never would have noticed that.
It's correct.
Okay.
In the original document, which I'm looking at here in my book, it's correct.
Yeah, that was.
Oh, in two.
Where it went crazy on.
In which process?
That's two years ago.
Okay.
Well, the formatting and all that stuff, it, you know, who knows? I guess I need the updated one, Sean. I, because I was reading it online and then I was reading in my, in this book.
Is that one too, that the teacher, where I want to see that? 2004?
2001.
Oh, two. 2001. Oh, another one? Yeah, I had that. I thought you said, oh, I thought you said another one, 2004. You just were saying just four.
2003.
Okay, I see it.
Another two in there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So where are the other two? I must have missed the first two.
1903.
I got that one.
20601. 2201.
I guess my.
That's pretty good eyesight.
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
Now, with these go, another question I had, because what I did at certain times, just again, tried to take the formatting. I just took the required page break somewhere. I see the break on this one. That was the, um, so I'm thinking about the, I, at the very last, go through, I had gone and put required page breaks, like just for example, on page nine, 20704, that's, that's got a break to keep that together with the actual, the actual. So before we actually put this on the web, with the website, I guess it scrolls through, right? It's not going to show, oh, we should have that page, but we don't want to have that on there. So we need to fix that. But this is, we still have approval. You know, which may have other changes, which will change all that stuff again.
Yeah.
So in a sense, it's just a, it's a kind of, and I just set it for, for us to be able to review it easily to see where those were. The types of things that you went through after I, I had done it. So you, have you had any questions about some things in there? Because I did change a couple of things that were not, I can, I can tell you where I changed a couple of things just to, to make some consistency of, um, some kind of couple of things that were word, numbering from the.
I did see a couple of numbering changes from ABC to 123 or something like that. I didn't bear to get it down my first scan though.
That was done again to, to make the sense of, of, like, was it continuation of a sentence? I would number them rather than have ABC.
I figured that that's what that was. So I didn't even, uh, I didn't write that down. The other thing that we talked about also was that some of these definitions, like the one, the new ones that we're putting in, may point to something else in the resolution. I went through the entire resolution looking for where it was referenced twice. And I don't see that there's going to be any trouble with that because it doesn't really point to any of, any of those.
I looked at that too. I didn't.
Yeah.
I did change a couple, I did change a couple of things. I don't know if that was one of those references. Well, when we, um, under, I have my notes here, just my notes. I don't know. I can look on here under 212. Not 11, for example, I changed subsection. I have my note here says change subsection 219, like 13 to 21912. So I have something that changed.
What's that article?
212.11. 212.11. That, that's just my notes. So maybe I, I may know.
It says the distance between the side lot lines measured by a laundry and parallel with the front lot line at a point minimum, required minimum front yard depth on a street as defined in subsection 219.
Yeah, so I, yeah, because I, um, I have here, I changed 21913 to 21912. So I must have looked back and saw that it was in a different top than what it, here. Again, I, these were just transcribed notes of mine and what I changed somewhat. I didn't check that so much. But there were things like that where, um, just going through to more, make it consistent. There, there's like two, a couple of places where it said, um, but of zoning appeals after board, it just said board before, the board of zoning appeals, things like that. So I mean, they were, those are not major things, but just think it might help clarity.
And I think they consider those things just.
Right, because they don't change any kind of meaning.
Right.
They work up the ones that, that could possibly, um, not change the meaning either. But Montgomery County has the thoroughfare plan there on 220.02 as Montgomery County. Other, Montgomery County thoroughfare plan. They say, I think they know, their, their plan of Montgomery County, whatever it is, that's, that was changed. But they're all things like that. I, there was never, not too much of any, I don't recall anything. It was only editing. Some consistency like in 220.01. And now that was just the word as, the dates in 220.01 was also, uh, I changed that date there in D, paragraph D, if you can refer to that, 220.01. Because the, I looked in the ORC in some of these places and it had the date October 31st, 1996. So I just changed that to conform with the ORC statement. And also changed, there's one real close there too, that said the numerical date 103196 and changed that to October 31st. So there, there were things like that that aren't really the interpretation of it. One thing I did wonder about, the very last section there under the definition for zoning certificate. And I know something you may have, it looked like the wording was different there than what it had been. Was that, did you call that change?
No.
Okay, because that would have seen, um, I didn't, I didn't change anything there, but I just thought that, that wording there, which was, I didn't see a problem with it. But it was different than what we had on.
Called different. I don't, I didn't recall seeing that change in there, but I could have missed it.
Actually, I liked, I think I liked the definition that's in there now. So whatever, that's why I thought, well, that's why I didn't change anything. I didn't check with you on that. If it was something that's changed, it seemed like it may have maybe came from a source document with it. But you say you didn't change that. Okay, um, we might want to look at that and just make sure it's, that's okay. The last, yeah, very last definition. Here, like a look at mine. I had my, the old resolution book here. If you can see that looks like. You say you have.
I think mine.
Okay. I got the old one too.
That's what I was looking at.
What that starts out that document signed instead of a document.
Look at that.
Yeah. These are her authors.
Seeing and being.
Just my ears.
But there may have been a change that you guys or maybe.
I don't care.
No, no, that's okay. This, well, like I said, this one seems better because it's like, the one that's, that's in the, in the old book, um, 12, 12. Doesn't really go much details as, uh, someone started reading it. The zoning map or maps of the unincorporated areas of term township or portion thereof, that with all amendments there to subsequently adopted. And this one has a lot more detail, like a document issued by the zoning inspector. For his or her authorization, authorizing buildings, structures or uses consistent with terms of this resolution. And for the purpose of carrying out and enforcing its provisions. Yeah, with a lot better definition.
Well, the first thing that you read is not the zoning.
Oh. Okay. Yeah, I've, I've written it. It's, it's, I meant the other one. That document issued by the. It, it's sort of similar in that, in that respect. As you can see, it doesn't have that detail like this one does about authorizing building structures, uses consistent in the terms of this resolution for the purpose of carrying and enforcing it. It's different. It says to be made on a particular property is permissible use according to terms. There is a difference in, in this, this, the one that was in here that I, that's why I thought maybe you'd done something.
I don't know. Do you recall you guys ever changing that?
It's hard to say because we've changed, you know, we went, it, it goes back to like 2010. We were making changes to some definitions. And, uh, so I wasn't able to get all that, all that documentation from way back. Then it, it could have been changed at that point. It's just, as you see though, it's just, it's in the one that was, uh, that we were using as our source book here.
I didn't bring my original one either from 2012. Do you guys have one of those?
That's the one.
Is that the one you're looking at that starts with that document?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I see that it's just red line change by her as a document issued by the zoning inspector.
I didn't go through the whole document to read word for word, one against the other, but I, I kind of glanced at just see if there were sections left out. I don't think I missed anything that way. I was looking at, I mean, on, on the computer. I just like, no, if there's a document that was conventional and here's the one that you put together from the sections. Let's explain also what, what David done. It made it very clear to see what was what. This one doesn't make it that clear because the purpose was to get all that editing formatting stuff out of there. So she had strike throughs for certain areas. She had red highlighted copy for other areas in element. You know, something like either that had been added without our knowledge or something had been deleted without our knowledge. And, uh, and that's what she was, that's why I say, say that I spent a fair amount of time, what you did, we're taking a longer, you didn't, I know that. When you're trying to go from several source documents and then combine them into one. And, and that's kind of formatting you did do, which was helpful to see what was changed before.
I will say that there is a spot that you guys need to write down for future when you change article 37, section 37. Article 37, section 3702. Starts with subsection number should be 21913. Should point to street. And I believe that these are things that were probably prior to this last change or the, because I think it was prior to this last change. It just never got updated. And so if you see anything that points to street, I, that's the only one I found that wasn't fixed.
219, so you, you say the reference to 21912 is not correct.
Right. That's.
21912 says story on it for the definition.
So 21913, street, and that's what it should be. It's 21913.
Good catch.
So if there's any changes down the line.
Yeah.
In these, this particular section, we'd update that.
So, yeah. We should bring up a good point because there's, you know, this was like typically iceberg as far as looking at definitions. When you can use a lot of chapters, all these articles that we also have. We had at one point, big one show and looked at formatting and, and also remember back sometime going through, that's probably more than 10 years ago, where we went through and make sure the numbers did. We found a lot of cases then that numbers did not match the other references.
But I think after that one, I think, I mean, this way that you're, you know, you guys, you guys, um, make a resolution to adopt this, I think that will fix everything pointing to definition spots, I believe.
And that's what we're making to do. It's doing some prettier or to get rid of, um, unnecessary problems or periods, which I did do anyway. But, uh, the main reason is so the, the add to the clarity and to make it easy for people to go from one section to the other when they need to find something.
Yeah. But that was the only other thing that I found when I made my last pastors. But I didn't read word for word. I was just looking for numbers.
Taking a whole year to do that. Any other questions from anybody as far as?
Are you marking down these down at all?
Well, just that, that's, and the other ones too that we had, I just marked it. Okay. On the new definitions, yeah.
Anything else, Deb? Was that?
That was all on my notes.
Anybody else see anything? Dave, it looks like you're maybe going through comparing old and new or something.
Got some new changes. I didn't see anything that stands out, used to be addressed.
Something that I don't think would change meaning, but there was near the end here. Let's see, where was it? I, under 225, 01 and 22503. There was, um, I don't see how, you have to almost look at the original, see, I, I combined, some of those didn't need to have, I think it was, didn't I need to have this re-paragraphed? And so I combined, I can, you know, like 22503, for example, had A, B and C there. And I, I, um, because it was the, the side yard versus yard. I didn't see a need to have two separate items for the side yard. They combined those two without that. So I did that 22503 and also 22501. That one used to have A, B and C as well. And they're both, um, in that case, in 22501, it's about the front yard. You can combine the front yard into one paragraph and do that. So nothing was changed other than combining that to make it more easily on the same subject each paragraph.
Yeah, let's see there. So knowing what we know then, yard of these, we probably need to make the changes and then have a vote. But, you know, not tonight. It sounds like we can't vote on it tonight. We need to take a clean paper than just say with amendments. We could do it either way, but.
I think it'd be less confusing later also. And we had several documents out there with minor changes, but still you're not sure what's, which one is which. And that way, if anybody has any other changes, find something, for example, yeah, that. How it didn't catch. That was the other problem with that was that sometimes just getting the, the document back with all the edit, with the strike throughs and the, and the other kind of copy and some italicized, wherever, all that. It, uh, it's still possible to miss something.
The, the urgency is to try to get the, the formal document, both on the website and with the county corrected. Because right now what's a legal document is, is, we can't say it's really incorrect because it is, it's, it's the legal document so far, but it's not what we want.
Wasn't the intended.
Yeah.
Exactly.
What the trustees wanted. Yeah, so, so since we probably can't approve it tonight with. Since we probably can't approve it tonight without these changes that we've found. But we, we could do it either way, we could say we're gonna change it and pass it, get it done. If we don't, we may have to have a special meeting between now and July because that's kicking, kicking it down the road three months. I know Mark would like to get it done before then. Move, move things along faster, right?
What's the likelihood of finding more mistakes, more problems?
Good question, I mean.
I would say not great, because a lot of, that you can speak, I mean, the things we're talking about are mainly. Minor types of things that won't, won't be an issue, even like, nobody's gonna care if there's italicized numbers written there, nobody, nobody's gonna say, wait a second. This is not legal, you italicize one of those numbers.
Most people aren't even gonna see that.
I know.
But, you know, you did very good to find all of that kind of stuff.
But yeah, I say instead of kicking it down the road, why don't we just? Why don't we go ahead and vote on it with, with changes? Acceptable with changes and.
Also a full board here tonight. Just if you do a special.
Let's agree then what those four, we had four italicized. Numbers. Uh, and make sure since I had this in different places. Anything else that we can, you recall that. I did some things on this fly there, we were talking about, so I had a four italicized, was there something else that any?
They didn't study their homework.
You have something else?
What's the matter with that? Point out, two twenty nineteen was it?
Yeah, the definition section.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, oh.
That's why I'm making a comment about, that's a whole another. Can of worms.
Yeah, but we could approve, we could approve the definition section, I think, with. Ethical changes.
It's all formatting.
Was there? Four, four things we, we talked about, four, four numbers.
Yeah, that's it.
Okay.
Like that, right? Okay, so.
And, and like I said, these, these breaks, I'm not gonna write it down until we get ready to actually. Page breaks.
One needs recognized by the chair.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept this as, as written with changes discussed tonight. Um, so that we can move on.
I second his motion.
Okay, seeing that the. Motion's been put before, do I hear? Do I take it? Does this have a roll call vote since we're passing this along?
Sure.
As we should.
Kurt Jacoby. Nate Jenks. Daniel Lee.
Hi.
Beard.
Yes.
Lander.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Andrew Stiller.
Okay.
And thank you guys for all your tremendous help.
Definitely, definitely.
For those who don't know, Dan has a background as a technical writer.
Yes, we know, some technical writer. I don't mind if they technical, I do. A lot of technical documents, but it's, it's marketing.
Marketing technical, yeah, you, you've got a lot of. Of manuals. Product manuals and things like that, right, crown equipment.
Too much.
No?
More marketing materials and marketing strategies.
Yeah.
And still doing it.
No, 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 I'm done. I don't know.
Okay.
So great, okay, so we've. That, uh, let's see. Okay, so we've talked about the definitions, solar panels. Arvin, you have neighbors who have, in the course of a year, I guess erected some solar panels that work. They're actually in their front yard and near the road. Pretty good sized one really, but they, they didn't have the option really of putting in the backyard without cutting down a bunch of trees.
Yeah, so, yeah, and their back is. Well, the rest of their property is planted and pine trees. Borders made, but, you know, where he put that and he has some evergreens, younger ones out front, eventually you'll never see it. But. Yeah, I mean, there was no regulation when he put that in whatsoever. He did work with Baller Rule Electric, who is our electric, is that yours too?
Missed it by that much.
Anyway. He did work with them to. To get the company that actually came in and did that, of course, and he had to also go through Montgomery County to do. Permits and inspections and so forth, but it's working out for him, I mean. That's kind of not the point, what you're asking here, but. Obviously, there needs to be something in place now that. Can regulate where they go and. And then. And then it needs to go before board. To be approved because. People could literally at this point put them anywhere.
And the size really isn't limited either.
No, but I think the size, I mean, unless you're really wanting to sell a lot off to the grid, I think the size is pretty much determined by your usage. You know, as a single home, single family home.
I think, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's, you know, I've talked to him and his system is big enough to do whatever. And he gets, you know, even on cloudy days, it supplies mostly.
That most of it electric.
What they need, yeah.
Does that affect?
Yeah. It's about all I know about it.
Infrares. No joke. That activate them solar panels.
That's how we get sunburn on a cloudy day.
Yeah. So. And, and we've talked about solar panels for a long time, but we, we don't even have a definition right now that, we could probably borrow one from. You know, the O R C or. You know, one of the other townships, I think you said.
I don't think we looked up solar. We were just looking up.
Where did I find that?
Campgrounds, that's what we were looking for.
Yeah, we were really, that's kind of a new business thing, but I.
Well, they do, I mean, if you don't have a garden space for it, yeah, I had.
That's something I can work on tomorrow.
Yeah. Mark, Mark had done a lot of work, when he was on the zoning commission on solar panels, dug into that a lot and. I've got something at home too, I can bring on that for you. So I think we could come up with a definition pretty quickly, but then the regulations for it. You know. Do we want them in, in front yards, should they be in the backyard like, you know, sheds, barns, any other accessory structure? And that, that's the way. It was posed to me is that it. Solar panels should probably be like any other accessory structure.
Well, that and the fact that you also don't want those reflecting on roadways, intersections. You know, there's, there's a lot to be considered there. In the instance that we're talking about, my neighbor, I mean, his turned out to where it's really not gonna be a problem. You know, because it doesn't face a road or whatever, you know, and yes, he got it put in there before there was anything written about it. But. That situation, you know, it, it turned out, I think, okay. But I got a couple of other things I wanna, I was talking to Chad Gilbert. And he has a farm in Trotwood. And they have come in and are gonna put solar panels. I mean, like acres and acres of solar panels, a solar, a solar farm. And he literally owns that, a piece of property, like ten acres in the middle of this. And he farms everything that currently that is gonna become solar. And. His parcel that he bought years ago for basically nothing, he told me, I won't share that, but. They're, they're offering ridiculous amounts of rent on that property. So. I mean, it, it can, it can happen pretty quick is what I'm saying. And so, I mean, and what they're enclosing and what proposing for the solar panel farm, I'll call it that. Blocks ass, access to what he owns. And, and he's looking at me and I'm like, okay, yeah, it's a no brainer, you can't get to it, you're just gonna have to. You know, rent it out to these people for this ridiculous amount per acre per year. So. You know, when we do start talking about all this, we need to consider. The farms that are around us and how much maybe a percentage or something that could happen to, I don't know. I was down in Brown County, I got a daughter that lives in Batavia. And we were driving down through there more toward, yeah, down toward Brown County. Anyway, it doesn't matter, but we drove through, on down this, I don't remember what highway it was, but there were, there were hundreds of acres. Down there that was all solar panels, hundreds of acres, I mean, you could look and look and beyond as far as you could see. There were solar panels and, and on the other side of the road was all the infrastructure. For more hundreds of acres that they hadn't, they've gotten the pipes in to they, where they would rotate on the pipes. And, and the wiring, so they were working on that, but. Apparently, you know, what the, some of these companies are offering for rent is way more than you can make renting it for farm ground. And, you know, once somebody caves than a lot of other people, because they're like, oh, you're getting that much, well, yeah. Through the farm, let's, you know, rent the solar. So it could be a problem, that is tabletop flat ground, I will say that down there, I mean, it's literally, you know. Whether that.
Sloppy too.
Well, yeah, it's Claremont County with a clay, they got about that much topsoil, and then the rest of it is like something you'd model and make pottery with. You can't drain it other than cut ditches in it. But anyway, that's pretty much all I have there.
One thing I heard about that at one point, back when this first started happening a few years ago, wasn't there some kind of boss agreement they signed for a very long term? It's not just like for a year, it's like.
Oh, it's like a thirty year lease.
That's what I thought, it's like, I somehow think.
Thirty year lease down there.
Yeah.
Some of them are forty.
Yeah, they may.
Well, I guess any, any amount.
You know, and, and there's a lot of. Newer language that have come out to go along with that kind of stuff as far as. Removal at that point of termination, that kind of stuff, you know, the, the earlier leases may not have even included that, but that's. Speculation, I mean, I need to go. Reclaim it.
Do I recall? And I think most of us were here, one, I think it was when Mark was on the. Or Cross was on the zoning commission and we were talking about this, the, the point was made that. At the O R C, the state of Ohio. I think they put the authority for this under the, what, the energy commission or something like that, so. Townships and counties don't have a lot of control. It's, it's like wind turbines.
Yeah, I was gonna ask about those wind turbines, because you go to Indiana and there's like fields of wind turbines and half of them don't work or whatever, but. Yeah.
So I'm, I'm not sure how much we could actually do, but we'll have to.
I thought, I thought it, I thought that that recently changed where you can zone. Maybe I'm mistaken, you know, anybody on that?
Went to, when I went to the conference in Columbus, I went to a solar thing for it, and I cannot for the life of me remember what they said, but I have a packet in the office somewhere. And I, I know they work with you. And I, I think once they, I think you can regulate it up to a certain percentage, but once it gets big, it's out of hand, if I remember right. Well, like I said, I, my memory is awful and I don't remember.
That's the first thing we need to know is. Can we really do anything about? I mean, before we go through all of. Because we did that once.
Wedding venues.
We did that on self hours too. That got thrown, I mean, we put a lot of work on that and, and it just.
I'll ask, I'll ask Anu Sharma, she's the township legal counsel at the county of our ass. I, I contacted her yesterday and talked with her today about the subject of.
It was the.
Oh, camp, campground, yeah. And she said, well, put it into an email and send it to me, so Maury talker, so I, I'm, I'll get on this too with her. See where it stands, what we, what we can do.
We need to know if the township can regulate any type of personal or, or farm. You know, if we have the legal authority to even do that, or we even, I think that's step one. So I don't know. You can reach out and find that or I'll do that. Yeah.
That's probably a difference for residential. Referral.
Exactly, and you know, and if, and if, if we can write it for residential, then we probably, we need to do that, but we need to find out if we can first. And then, you know, it may be eventually have to go to the V Z A and whatever, if it doesn't fit. Guidelines that we set forth, like we did with, you know, outside structures, garages, barns, things like that. I mean, I know a lot of those have to go through the V Z A because they're not behind the house. But sometimes it makes absolutely perfect sense to have them beside the house, you know, or, you know, right next to it and not, and not behind. And I don't know, maybe that was, looking back, maybe we screwed up. You, you know. Because I, I, a lot of barns are beside where you can either go into the garage or you turn right and or left and you go in, into it. An auxiliary structure. You know, I think we did put the thing in there that it needed to be behind, but. So maybe, you know, I'm not trying to stir up a can of worms here on another subject, so forget I said any of that.
Okay, I'll, I'm talking about that, because really, we're talking about private. Use of a solar panel or few solar panels on a property, and then there's solar farms, and I, I remember this. A threshold of fifty megawatts or. Gigawatts or something like that. And, and above that, it's considered a farm, below that. At the production level. Then townships and. And, and just probably say some say in it, but. It's just, just big memory soft.
I got it, and we need to know all that before we.
Do you live in town or in? Yeah, where, where your neighbor is, that's.
Oh, yeah, in the township, I just.
Anyone who's on this is a township, township resident, yeah. Um, okay, well, I'll, I'll just back out of this and for now, and get, get some of the research done that we need to do. Okay, all right. We also have talked about overnight semi trucks and trailers being parked in residential areas. Residential lots, one issue came up with a lot that did not even have a principal structure, a house. And. You know, so. If it didn't have a house, the, the zoning resolution really didn't apply, that's, that was the problem there. So we're gonna have to address that. I didn't want to get into that tonight because I didn't know how this definitions thing was gonna go, that was primary, but it hadn't gone away yet, so.
Were you got campgrounds on here, so?
Yeah.
Want me to kind of tell us what the, what the history of that one is?
Well, let's, I think that's, we've got that for new business, so let me move here as we, in order if we.
Oh, okay, got you guys, I'm sorry.
So. So we'll have to delve back into this one. I, I guess what I'll do is I'll ask Anu Sharma about this issue as well, yeah.
I mean, I think we, has Mark talked to her about it, and there's, there's no, because it was, is it was specifically a complaint down in Sunbury. Who, the guy has a lot, he's put a driveway in. Who, the guy has a lot, he's put a driveway in. He's wanting to build a, a primary structure, but he hasn't yet. But he parks his truck overnight. He doesn't leave it running all night, but she complained because he was starting it up at morning, let it run for twenty, thirty minutes to let it warm up as you do with semi trucks. And she said the noise was too much, but she's complaining multiple times. Mark and I both looked at the resolution. I can't remember if Mark talked to him, knew about it or not, but there was no violation. We have told this woman multiple times, there's no violation. I've talked to him because he, he did come to me asking about what he needs to do, what he's wanting to build. And I told him, you know, right now there's no violation. What he's wanting to do is when he clears out up on that hill, he's wanting to build a house with, uh, an attached, I guess it's kind of like a barn dominium. And it's gonna be a house with a garage with it. It's gonna be tall enough to be able to park his semi in there. So he does that. It's a non-issue. And that is the only complaint we've had about it. It's from one particular person who likes to complain. And once he does that, it's, it's like I said, it's a non-issue. Cause I did tell him that if you build your house, you can no longer park the semi truck in front of your principal structure. And that's when he laid out the plans for me. He said, well, this is what I want to do. So.
So he will against her being compliant.
Yeah.
Okay. So the, the goal is to make that a resonance, because right now I think he lives up in, on Heights.
I'm not sure where he lives. I know, I know he doesn't live there. I, I know he's, he's doing all the work himself, so he's clearing it out as he can. But yeah, once he, once he builds.
Actually, he is in flex. Illegal about what he's doing.
Exactly. And, and she's been told that, he's been told that.
So is this an issue we should just drop for the time being?
I don't think so. I don't think it's a problem. There's not, it's not.
Are we have a decimal allowed something convenient?
I think we do, but I think it states in there, if I remember correctly, that semi trucks are called, kind of like tractors and whatnot.
Too many rules makes them hard.
Yeah.
Sometimes stuff like that can just be worked out with the people, you know, don't let it run so long, you know? Is it okay if I just let it warm up for five minutes without complaining? I don't know.
Yeah.
We gotta be some common sense.
The same complainer complained before because he left it there longer than seventy-two hours. Like, maybe the man took a vacation, you know? But I've driven by a bunch of times because it's, you know, I drive, I close to there and it's not often parked.
Yeah, okay. Hey, so end of story, we'll just drop it.
Yeah, we've got a lot to do with time. Yeah. Okay, other old business. I'll speak into it to anybody. Let me turn around, beat my head on the wall tomorrow.
Any other old business that, uh, I brought up tonight? Okay, move on to new business. Um, so, uh, yeah, Shawna, go ahead with campground.
Okay. So I was approached by someone on behalf of the Waddle Corporation. They were curious, they're not moving forward yet, but they were curious as to what it would take. What they're wanting to do is take the lake, is it a lake quarry?
It's, it's a quarry.
Okay. Well, they're wanting to take the land on the corner of Butter and one twenty-three, around that area of the quarry and make a mini campground, I guess it would be. They're wanting to do five hundred square foot mini cabins all around the lake, lake. Um, and they had talked about, and me and Mark had discussed it and what they're wanting to do is basically do a lot split and cut the lake in half, because right now it's just owned industrial. You can't do that on industrial. And they're still, they have, they have mined as far down and on that side of the lake as they possibly, the quarry as they possibly can, without getting more expensive equipment to go farther, they can't do anything more with it. So they're wanting to find another way to work something out over there. So they want to split it in half, continue mining the other part of the quarry, but take that side and build seven mini cabins, like I said, five hundred square feet. So it would be, then he called it like a campground. But we don't have a definition for campground. It wouldn't follow the square footage or the lot sizes, simple structures. So it was kind of in question and I, and Mark told me to, you know, to, to tell the guy what all he needed to do. And, but I mean, we don't think it would be passed. I don't think the board of zoning appeals would pass it, but.
Well, that'd have to come to us first.
Yeah.
If they're talking about actually rezoning the land.
Yeah.
And that would be.
But if he managed to rezone part of it to agricultural, which is the only way he would be able to do it. But like I said, there was, there's nothing for campgrounds, very few townships, and you looked have anything for campgrounds. We have camping equipment as well as, you know, everybody else has camping equipment, but there's very little for campgrounds.
Is that Quillan or Parks District ground?
I don't think so. I think it's agricultural around it. I'd have to look at my map, but.
Across the road, it's agricultural.
There's going to be requirements for sewage too.
Yeah. Well, and that was another issue.
I've heard that too. I've heard it in the past too, um, years ago.
Right on your street.
I tried to do that.
On your street.
And you can't have, you have to get the, uh, facilities and water and, and in fact, that's what I heard before. That's why they were down. They didn't have that stuff.
And on the other side, the only ground there.
It's not easy to get permitted. If they were to do it.
But it, and it would be built.
Relate. Who control? Who regulates every county?
Right.
Well, department itself.
Very well, I heard about.
Department, there's like. Get more information on it. We've been working on.
Five hundred square, five hundred square foot cabins. That's like a five hundred square foot house.
But it was, I mean, the question come up, is the quarry, you know, they want to use it as a, a lake, they just want to do Airbnb's with it. Rent them out as Airbnb's. Is the lake even able to be swam in? Is the water safe?
My understanding.
Can you do water sports in there?
They can have undertow just like. Yeah, they're, I don't buy.
Airbnb in the middle of nowhere.
You couldn't put.
While you're listening to them, you know, they, but my, yeah. You got busy traffic, you got mining over there. I don't really understand.
Just put a septic system in, because that would leach into the lake.
So that's.
Those quarries can be kind of like quicksand too, like you were saying, they just, they just, as soon as you, the accidents are.
So, but it all come down to, we have nothing for campground.
Yeah.
Uh, and apparently neither does anybody else.
So, yeah, no other township seems to have, they don't have a definition for it.
Yeah, and we printed, I, we printed out what, what me and him found. Um, but.
You found Perry Township and what they said.
Yeah.
You took, you took two townships, I took three and I want all through them to nothing.
But I did like the one in Perry Township because it did mention, uh, sanitary facilities that have been approved by the state and our local board of health.
That's what.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's. We're spending like ten thousand dollars on drawings just so we can get it approved.
Yeah.
Just to get the approval to start.
Because the ones that, the ones that Mark found, they were good, but they didn't mention anything like that. And I think that really, I think that's important.
I knew you were doing that because, uh, I've been talking to her about the definition, trying to figure out what to do. That's the land that, and I looked on the O R C and there's actually some, I, I forget how I found it by doing search and search words. It's something to do with camping. And there's actually section of thirty-seven, something, section thirty-seven.
Right away, the railroad track.
Thirty-seven twenty-nine oh one?
Yeah.
That's the one in the email I got printed out for you.
Okay. Well, it also has in there, it, maybe the sentence next to it, it's all about the department of health.
Oh, does it?
That's that section that had, it has a good definition. I thought, well, this would be a good definition. There guys before and after. But it does, I, I thought the time, what I put before, that will knock it out right there.
Perry Township, um, your, um, regular meeting thing on the second page. And I, I thought that one was.
Yeah.
But I think we definitely need to be very specific as far as size and, and buildings. Cause I think, I think a cabin is not considered a dwelling.
Look, it is. Definition. Your water is going to.
Yeah, absolutely.
A room or suite of two or more rooms designed for use by one family or housekeeping unit, living and sleeping purposes in which includes permanently installed cooking and laundry required sanitary. Those would be considered a rest.
If you're trying to rent them as. Now, do we allow rental in Ag?
Um, I don't, I don't know. I don't, I don't think so. I seem to recall that would mean, is there something about, we had that discussion once about rental, someone wanted to do a rental and it's behind their property and it's something. We couldn't, they couldn't do it.
It would be like.
Short term.
Last week, yeah, last thirty days.
Shawna, we have, we have setback regulations too, as far as how close to the roads a structure can be and so forth. I don't, I mean, just off the top of my head, I don't know that there'd be enough setback room to actually put any structures there because there's a railroad track right there too. And I don't, I think it would break about every regulation we've got as far as locating a structure. It sounds like these would be structured.
It's not a lot of, it's a lot of green grass there, but it's a pretty small spot.
Yeah. Well, there's that little, little thing out front, but, uh, you know, what, I think what he's talking about is on the backside or on the east side.
Over on Butter Street?
On Butter Street.
Let me run to my office and grab the little thing.
Very big area.
No. That's why it's got all the concrete. Your car gets dirty when you drive there, so much concrete.
That should be covered in white powder before you left.
It seems to.
It won't fly because of sewage and water anyway.
Tough spot.
I don't think there's a white powder thing in the description for the Airbnb.
Skip that. Your car will look like it's white when you leave. Or white, right?
Can't imagine how dusty and dirty that gets.
Nobody else is allowed to bring up any fraud.
This is their business plan.
For table.
They want to do, yeah, all the way around that side. I mean, it brought me a whole business plan.
Drop into that lake right there.
I mean, I'm gonna sleepwalk. He did it on my vacation. He was halfway to the beach before I found him.
That one, need some fence and by the time you make it safe enough for people to be there, then what's the, it's not very quaint when you got both of.
But yeah, that one, that one brought up a lot, straight to Mark on that.
Sounds like they, so they can't mine anymore, so they're trying to continue the income for the, the lack of where they've hit it at.
Well.
Think you might a few more feet towards Butter Street.
I think a lot of this has to do with honoring his son.
Yeah.
And, and that is awesome. You know, trying to make a, something special out of this. I mean, because the lake is named Daniel's Lake. He lost his son to. Yeah.
Oh, brush.
So, you know, I'm not begrudging him anything as far as, you know, that kind of thing, but I don't, I don't.
I mean, the, the peace marker, there's tons of space on it. I mean, it'd be much more. And there's a little camping thing that's all that back. There's, there's a way to do it there where he's trying to do it. I don't understand. He's trying to create more income from that space, but it just seems like there's a lot of hurdles he's gonna have to jump to even.
Yeah.
That's a beautiful place. I mean, if you want to talk about what place where I would go to an Airbnb, that's.
Yeah.
If they put it back in those continent trees, Lord, that's beautiful.
By the center of Terry post.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Great idea. Just that location's rough.
Yeah. Okay, well, um, I guess Shawna, I have some more work to do on this, just to dig into it and bring it up for next meeting. Old business.
First, the definition of campground.
Yeah, well, just even see if there's, see what we can do. I'm gonna ask the county since I'm already talking with Anu Sharma and she says, and I said, she, send me an email, try to list the points that, uh, we want to go through. Uh, probably what I'll do is I'll just email out a draft so that you guys can comment on before I send it to her.
But I think everybody agrees that there definitely needs to be something about public facilities.
Yeah.
Regulation, they get to have a bath house. There's all kinds of things. Doesn't have a campground for it to go through.
Yeah, in, in the larger picture, uh, you know, I looked at what the O R C has said about it. And I, I saw some things about our campgrounds, you know, uh, uh, how, how problems can be addressed with people getting out of control, you know, nuisance, nuisance, uh, behavior. You can imagine people having big parties and stuff. Uh, also people who, who might want to live cheaply, so to speak, you know? I mean, if you rent a cabin for forever at five bucks a month or whatever, well, it may not be what we want to have here in the township.
That's right.
Those kind of problems can come up when you've got, like, uh, non, non-standard residences, you know? Anyway, the O R C kind of flagged that. I thought it better, probably better back off and just.
That's.
For a longer term picture for the, for the resolution, so you know, what we want to finally come up with, what we want to craft here as far as campground. So, uh, this, this is a fair minimum, I think, what Perry Township has there.
I think a good starting point.
Good start, yeah.
Yeah. I think we need to be very specific.
Yeah, better than this, than nothing. Yeah, right. So, okay, um, can we move on? Any other comments on that?
I can make anybody copies of that if they want them.
Ready with this. Okay, so just, let's see. Up to exactly, I, I won't spend much time on this at all, just because I want to show you what, uh, uh, going through some of the, uh, some of the other township. Uh, where is that? I have them too.
X is ten.
Let me graph it.
He's not putting them.
What happened to Miami Township? Be twenty. That's not what, he's not using Roman numerals. He's just fill them in the blank.
And do you want me to go make you a copy of that real quick?
He'd like your copy, yes. She's gonna make you a copy of this.
Anybody else want a copy?
Roman numeral X ten, right?
Yes.
Okay, it's only twenty foot berm around that lake.
I don't think that's what he's trying to say there, but.
Where at?
Where? Where was that, Fred? Oh, right here.
Oh. Yeah, and yeah, I think it's just kind of a fill in the blank kind of thing. X just because they don't have a, a number.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's about what it is, being truthful about it. No doubt.
It's not much real estate there.
Before you get in a railroad track.
Didn't fall. Didn't fall in the pond.
You don't have a problem with that.
But it's.
Go up on the hill and note.
Well, they're doing something. They're the old place.
Oh, yeah.
What's that? What's all that about? Anybody know? The bulk, the old bulk farm where, is that called Daniel's place? I don't know.
You know, it's actually. Over the big cars.
Is that gonna be something, uh? Is that a township?
No.
Oh, is it shitty?
Yeah.
It is now. See, the cemetery wasn't a good township.
Yeah.
Should say now or?
That's been annexed by the town.
It used to be one. Astoria came in there.
Bulk farm, man, and the township.
He keep on that.
You gotta change.
He don't talk to that himself.
Yeah, and he was.
That's a turn to more of the. Does that get some, turns the park, Terry, uh, Metro Park off some of those?
And it's all right. He's honoring Danny.
Right.
The one he do something while he's all choked up.
Well.
Well, that's the truth. Oh, I get it.
Okay, so, so I think we're caught. Any other questions on that at this point?
We're just tabling that for now.
We got some work to do. So in, in, Shawna looked at two township resolutions. I went through three of them. One of my found was Miami Township. And I just wanted to show you a few things that they do, but I guess. And I just wanted to show you a few things that they do, but I guess the good news is it's mostly, our, ours is mostly like theirs. You know, in other words, we cover a lot of the same stuff, but there's some things that they do that I'd like to have us consider for the future. This, this is just food for thought, really, looking, looking forward, so, um. You know, they, they have their definitions and, and all that, let's see, uh, but in. Probably better if I. From this down here.
So. Ever have to deal with the things Miami Township.
Well, yeah. But they do a lot of this type of thing, okay, where they have graphics in there. And I think that's a whole lot better than just text. It helps to eliminate some of the question, you know. We, we read through this stuff and we, we're wondering what we wrote ourselves, you know, what did we mean, you know?
It would help me.
Yeah, okay.
I'm sitting there and someone's on the phone and I'm trying to read it and I'm.
So, you know, this is talking about the grade of the ground relative to the primary structure and how, you know, where this stuff has to be. And if it's above twenty-four inches, it's, you know, it's talking about pools and decks and. And how the, the primary structure has to be there before the pools and the decks can be built, things like that. But drawings like this, I think, I find very helpful.
Excellent, but how good is, uh, our, our writer, how good of a drawer is?
So here they, here they show a retaining wall, um, there's, there's some other.
No, I, I agree though, Kirk, I think that would be wonderful.
Page forty-four, here, here they show, here, here's another thing where they do, they do.
Yeah.
They do uh calculations, formulas for figuring out how big a parking area should be. You know, rather than just, you know, giving them some, some figures, okay, we need somebody parking spaces, this gives them a formula, okay?
I thought I said we weren't gonna bring any more problems.
Just future stuff, Mark. Okay, um, let's see, page seventy-two.
No, that's, that, that, those are great.
As a uh, it's a guy that taught, taught architecture and geography.
I've retired, did you remember, did you forget that?
Yeah, I bet you could draw this, I bet you could draw this like nobody's business. So here's, so this shows lot uh. Design, basically. And you know how ours is so complex in our description, we're. This is exactly what we need, I think, you know, where it is on a corner lot, what's double frontage, you know, and, and that kinda thing, right?
I agree.
All right, so.
What's that song in our next hundred years?
Yeah, right. Photo, page eighty here. So here they have, they have some photos of examples of what building. Uh, design criteria example, you know, so they've got, like you said, they're. They're way out there compared to where we are, but they've got often landing, a special district that they created.
That's, that's how good they are.
Yeah.
You've been through that.
We don't wanna mistake, make the mistakes they made. So, so this shows, you know, building materials and things, examples there, which are, you know. Once again, we're not dealing with this, but there may be some things on industrial buildings, commercial buildings, we wanna be more specific about. Okay, so also, let's see.
Architecture to match.
Now, if you go all the way up to page one, eighty. Eighty-one. Yeah, or, I think we're. Okay, so here is uh. Here are some charts that they use, okay? This is something else, another, another approach that I thought was good. So, you know, this shows, this is on landscaping. You know, they're, they're talking about minimum number of trees and things like that. It's a chart that, that uh shows, you know, business. Business districts, office districts, industrial, you know, that, try to help, help you out, trying to help. The, the residents out to know what's required of, you know.
For the avid person, some of this can be difficult to read and understand.
I think, I think originally, it, it wasn't me, believe me, this, I think this came from some kind of boilerplate legal document years ago.
I believe.
So, cause it's, it's, it's written by lawyers. Sure.
There's a couple of times I've had to sit there and read it over and over and over and I'm still looking at it like, I don't.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with you, Dan. I see it in other, other township resolutions, but it, it all came from some places. There's too much.
Well, lots from the ORC, we know that, lots from the ORC.
Right. So here's another, this is something else that they did, a chart. That shows, you know, the basic, uh, the, the, the main uh districts. Ag, residential, office, business, industrial and park. That's, you know, an industrial park that's great. We don't have anything close to that, but this, this shows where things are, are permitted, okay? Or permits uh and uses structured by district. Beyond that, you know, you'd have to go for some special. Special exceptions, I guess. So this, I, I think that's pretty handy too.
Kirk, I'll make it even better. Eric Mark will love this one. So, instead, this, you know, this is really outdated, I have to tell you. What, what we need is a zoning app.
The software's.
Like that, probably that, just to have as a reference, just to have at my desk. I mean, that would be great. Instead of having to search through each, because right now, because that's, you've got everything in one spot. Right now, I'm having to go through different districts. In the list.
But if, if the residents had this on the website, they wouldn't even need to ask you, right?
Yeah.
Who's good at coding? And create an app here, maybe this is a multi-billion dollar app.
Oh, no.
Create the front end, then you.
I can do electronic payment, pass that.
Okay, yeah, I think we, we looked at something similar here, um, so this is roadways. Then this is, this is showing where uh, something, some. Unu- or different ways of looking at side yards. So I guess this is what they're saying is the principal structure. This would be the rear yard. You could, in this case, say this is a side yard or over here, this is a side yard. Now, none of this is on our books, but I'm just saying that this, the visual helps understand what.
Really does.
And there's one other thing that we really beat ourselves up on. Uh, and that is clear up at page three oh five. Remember all the time we spent on. On the signs. Okay, so they actually here have some examples of what a sign might look like. And, you know, from a graphic standpoint, it's what we guys, you know, got a lot of different types of signs defined. But we don't really. And it's hard to know what that would look like, so here's another one here. So.
See, they have to put pictures in here because this is zoning for dummies. And we have the intelligent people. Who can get it by reading.
So that's all I really had on that.
That's all you have? I was like, wait, it's actually, we had the problems with the neighbors with poultry. I want to see different types of like goose in it, Doc.
You can have this kinda chicken, but not that.
Yeah, there's the graphic of the, you know, the, the trouble with the people that can't get together with the, the truck running in the morning and.
Neighbors fighting.
A little word bubble of the truck on vroom, vroom.
Animals or snob who.
Okay.
Don't start with animals because it's one of my things.
What program are you using on this? But. If you look at the tools up there, do you have the drawing tools up there?
No, no, I get the free version.
Okay.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, this, this is, this is the free version of Adobe, yeah. You've got it, Acrobat.
We've got all the Acrobat.
And who can teach you, and who can teach you that are the kids? Have those kids come in here and they'll give you a workshop at one of your meetings and they'll teach you how to do this. They can do it in thirty minutes.
On your phone.
Oh, yeah, we, we need to hire one of those kids.
Junior high or high school, I'm, I'm, I'm.
You're serious?
I'm serious. I mean, you can have them come in here and it would, one of your meetings, make a special meeting. They would come in here, they would teach you that process, show them what you want and they'll teach you how to do it and, and it would be nothing to them.
Well, if the teacher could just give them some extra credit. Okay, so any other new business before we close the meeting up? Any other thing that's on your plate? Okay.
Second that.
All in favor? Okay, thank you, everybody. Plus something happened, I think we got the important thing, so.